It is six o'clock. I will call the City of Alleghen City Council meeting to order for Monday, August 11th, 2025. And Joel, we take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Zeter.
Present.
Councilmember Westover.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Canalis.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hands.
Present.
Mayor Perrigo.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, thank you. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda item number four is approval of the August 11th, 2025 agenda. And can I get a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve with the amendment to number eight, removing and adoption of Resolution 25 dot two five. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any questions, comments from council? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number five, five A is regular meeting minutes from July 28th, 2025. Can I get a motion to?
I make a motion to approve the July 28th meeting minutes.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Were there any corrections? Did anybody see any corrections? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving down to our agenda item eight A is the public hearing and second reading of ordinance five three zero to rezone 650 Grand Street.
Thank you, Mayor. At your July 28th meeting, the City Council had a first reading on this rezoning request. Earlier on July 21st, the Planning Commission reviewed the application to rezone 650 Grand Street. To, it's a planned unit development district. This will allow Community Action Agency of Alleghen County to start the process of transferring most of their operations out to this site. Tonight, you'll be holding the public hearing for anybody in the audience that like to comment on this. And then you'll be making a motion afterwards to adopt ordinance five thirty, which approves the actual rezoning. Any questions for staff?
All right, I don't see any questions from council. So at 6:03 PM, I will open the public hearing. If you do have a comment on this item, please approach the podium and state your name. All right, I am seeing no public comment for this agenda item, so I will close the public hearing. Okay. All right, council discussion for staff, I should, well, should say any questions for staff before we? No? All right, can I get a motion to approve ordinance five three zero?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance five three zero.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any further comments, discussion? All right, see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, agenda item number nine is the first of two public comment periods in city council meetings. If you have a comment that you would like to share, please come to the podium, state your name and address. And we do limit it to three minutes for the sake of time, but I think we may have some extra time tonight, so. If anyone has any public comment. It's pretty light on public comment tonight. I am not seeing anyone for a public comment. Okay, I will move down to agenda item 11A, city boards, commissions, and area agencies. 11A one is a review of the August 2025 Airport Advisory Board minutes, and it looks like Mayor Pro Tom Hands will update us.
Yep, I was present at this meeting, first one since I've been back on council. We had a little new business, which was there was somebody looking to do some bailing at the airport. Possibly, we could use it as a source of income. The board was supportive of it, but we were questioning where they wanted to actually do the bailing. So we needed more information. Got some updates, the hangar leases, we only have three empty hangars currently. The T-hangers are going up, you could see the steel being erected currently. There was a little bit of discussion about the papie light, that's still got to get fixed, and the engineer discovered something different on it. Then we had some discussion at the end of the meeting about planning for not really an airshow, it says airshow, but it really should just say a fly-in for the third week of June. So we discussed that a bit, talking of like a pancake breakfast or car show, food trucks. Also maybe like a movie night out there. I mentioned that we should probably develop some form of budget if there's any money that's needed for it. If there is, that way we can, and we're planning it for next June, so there's enough time to do this, to come back to council and say. And really, I think the only thing that was any real cost that they talked about was maybe like a DJ. So beyond that, it's like normally we had the Lions Club out there in the past to do pancake breakfast, and there's real no cost to the city for that. And the rest of it's just people flying in, and so. And then one last item was there's a, we're looking to get the compass rose repainted. And so we're trying to find a group that's called the Ninety-Niners, which are female ply pilot group. They painted it before in the past, they coordinated it with the Boy Scouts. And that, it's not just, the compass rose is used out there for planes, they come set on the compass rose to set their instruments. So it's got to be accurately drawn and painted out so that then they can orientate and get their compasses all working. Currently, it is heavily faded and really unusable. So that's about all that we discussed.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions? All right, moving down to 11C one is a request to approve a change order to PO two five dash zero seven six eight to Ebb and Marsh in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for TMF grant work.
Yeah, this is, as it states, a change order, the work that Ebb and Marsh has done already. Because of all the work that our staff is doing, Ebb and Marsh asked if they, if we wanted them to do the marking of the services that were being potholed. I said yes, so that was done on the existing ones. In addition to that, what we had known already at, when we started this project of this grant, there was extra money in the grant. So we're allocating that money, some to Ebb and Marsh for administration to continue on, and then some to plumbers to continue doing a few more potholes. The plumber's contract already had the contingency built into it, so we just need to update the agreement with Ebb and Marsh with the change order to change their amount.
Are there questions for staff from council on this agenda item? No? Nope. All right, I am not seeing any questions. All right, can I get a motion to approve change order? To change order, God, I'm like reading this now, to approve the change order to PO two five dash zero seven six eight in the amount of fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
I will make the motion to approve the change order.
And support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion amongst council? Seeing none. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 11D one is a request to approve PO two six dash zero eight one nine to Consumers Energy in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And PO two six dash zero eight two nine to Wyndham Mueller Electric in the amount of thirty-seven thousand ninety-five dollars for underground electric services in the Hubbard parking lot.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the reconstruction of the Hubbard Street parking lot, that occurred earlier this year. We are now at the point where we are recommending that we utilize remaining funds in the budget to lower several of the east-west lines that crisscross that parking lot that are also more commonly known as service lines to several buildings that include two twenty-one crowbridge, one hundred and ten chestnut, and one hundred and eight chestnut. When we budgeted this project two years ago, or last year in FY twenty-five, the total city cost was going to be five hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars. However, after successfully securing grants from HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development out of Washington DC, as well as USDA funding, which is also a federal department, our total annual, our total city cost was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand three oh seven ninety-four. That was all shown in your report. When we look at the total contract and all this work, our final cost, if we include this additional work we're talking about right now, is three hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-three thousand ninety-four cents. That's also on page twenty-five of your council packet. This means that we will have a cost savings total of fifty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents for this entire project. This is similar to what we did with the Cutler Street parking lot, just on the, across the street here, across Crowbridge from this parking lot. It's something we'd like to do when we do parking line improvement projects, we'd like to lower as many of the east-west crisscrossing lines that we can just to remove some of the visual clutter that overhead lines create. I do want to be clear, this is not all of the overhead lines, the ones that run along the alleyway behind the Pizza Hut, Alleghen Eye Care, Morgan's Appliance, Regent Theater, et cetera. Those are stay in, those north-south lines. This is just the east-west ones that are not high-power. This also does not represent the high-power three lines you see right here where the cursor is. But all these dark black ones that you see that are prevalent, you can't see on that screen. So all of these east-west lines will go down. It's these three high-power ones that cannot come down. And that's because all those poles have a variety of different sized transformers. And to create ground-mounted transformers was going to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for this project. Any questions for staff?
No? All right, I don't see any questions from council. All right, can I get a motion to approve PO two six dash zero eight one nine and PO two six dash zero eight two nine?
I make a motion that we approve the two POs?
A second.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any questions, further discussion amongst council? Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11D two is a request to adopt Resolution twenty-five point two five approving changes to the standard lighting contract between the City of Alleghen and Consumers Energy.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you may be aware, but we have a contract with Consumers Energy where we have to pay for the electricity that the streetlights use. So as part of this, some of the streetlights are metered, like the ones that are downtown, and some are a per diem cost that we pay by per diem, I really mean per month cost that we pay for the streetlights. The cost of those are set by the Michigan Public Service Commission and the rate book with Consumers Energy. With the residential development that's happening at 500 Delano Street, where there's forty-two residential homes are being built, five streetlights have to be installed as part of this. These are pedestrian-style streetlights, so similar to the ones we have downtown, not exact, but similar. Five of them will have to go in. It's estimated that those will cost the city thirteen dollars a month for each of those. And so we have a contract with consumers before they go ahead and work with the developer to install those. The city has to amend our contract, and that's what this resolution does.
Any questions for staff? All right, can I get a motion to adopt Resolution two five point two five?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five point twenty-five. Second.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion amongst council, comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 11E one is a request to approve accounts payable and payroll.
It is requested that the City Council approve accounts payable in the amount of one million one hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents and payroll in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents for a total disbursement of one million three hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and supported. Any questions on accounts payable?
I do have just one. The, the federal tax deposit, what happened there was a filing issue there. Tracy, I apologize, I meant to get that earlier to you.
Yes, there was a. Oh, yeah. There was a filing issue, and I'll have to look into it. I don't know what happened with that right off the top of my head. I'll have to get with Carol and get back with you on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Are there other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. 11E two is a review of downtown Alleghen events and request to approve a transfer of forty-one thousand dollars to Positively Alleghen.
Thank you, Mayor. I will kick this off, clearly Parker Johnson can chime in as he sees fit. The request is to go over our events for 2025, as well as request that City Council do a transfer of forty-one thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand from the Downtown Development Authority budget, and fifteen thousand from the general fund budget. Our Positively Alleghen events really operate on a calendar year, even though our budget and all our other program that the city does is on the fiscal year. We start the year off really with Bridge Fest, which is the second Saturday in June. Then we go into Rolling on the River, which is every Friday night in June, July, and August typically. July three Jubilee is our America's Birthday Celebration. This year on October third and fourth, we will be doing a fall celebration. After years of requests from various members in the public saying we have to do something in the fall, it's going to be Halloween Hoot and Howl. And then keeping with tradition, every Friday in December before Christmas of our Festa Fridays. And then we end the year with a big New Year's Eve celebration on the riverfront. In addition to those events, you know, city staff, we either host or support other what I call low-cost events, such as tonight, the Fork in the Road, doesn't take much of the city to get that up and running and having all these people walk around downtown and enjoying the nice weather. We also support sidewalk sales, which happens in July. And then we also do an occasional concert here or there at the Griswold, either partnering with community organizations or the city just pulling it off on their own. This is a budget of where we are so far, th- this is a list of our sponsorships that we get for each of our events. We aim to get a lot of sponsors to pull this off, but we aren't very successful in all the categories. For Bridge Fest this year, we received three thousand dollars in sponsorships. One thousand dollars came from Cunningham Dolman. Cunningham Dolman is a lawyer in Holland, Michigan. One of their, I don't know if it's a partner or an associate, she lives in the Alleghen area, and she's really impressed with what Alleghen is doing. So she goes to her employer and says, I would like to put Alleghen in the running for community sponsorships, it's a program they have. And we benefit that way, and we're very thankful that, you know, a local resident here goes to their employer and says, support what Alleghen does. Full disclosure, because people have done this research, Cunningham Dolman is also the city attorney for Holland, Michigan, where my former employer. There was no connection on this. Everyone thought at first I reached out to someone, I did not. Honor Credit Union gives a thousand dollars, Milbacher and Sons gives a thousand. You'll see Milbacher and Sons up here a couple times. Rolling on the River, we generate seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in sponsorships for that. Alleghen Credit Union gives thirty-five hundred, Alleghen True Value gives thirty-five hundred, Gordon Funeral Residence gives thirty-five hundred, Tibbetts Financial Consulting gives thirty-five hundred, and Reickert Realtors Platinum Group gives thirty-five hundred. Very, very impressed that we can fully fund Rolling on the River with those five sponsorships. July three Jubilee, Alleghen Township partners with the city and gives us seven thousand five hundred dollars for that event. That helps, goes to the ten thousand dollar firework bill we receive. Our Halloween Hoot and Howl, so far we have received a thousand dollars from Milbacher and Sons for that event. Festa Fridays, Milbacher and Sons has given us a thousand dollars for that event. And then our New Year's Eve Celebration, Milbacher Sons gives us a thousand dollars. And then today, we received a check from Alleghen Event, that's why this number is different than what's in your packet. Here is where our shortcomings has come up. So at the beginning of the year, and I'm talking 2025, not the fiscal year, but the calendar year, we started with nineteen thousand dollars in our Positively Alleghen budget. We felt comfortable based off previous years, at the sponsorships we were receiving the previous year, when we didn't ask for any funding from the General Fund of DDA last year, that we were able, gonna, we were going to be able to raise enough sponsorship fees to go two years in a row and not asking for a fund transfer from the DDA or the General Fund. However, that has not happened. Bridge Fest, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue. We brought in three thousand dollars in sponsorships that you saw on the previous slide, and about four thousand six hundred in what we're going to call revenue from event attractions. That's food trucks, wristbands for carnival rides, or the Smash It Car exhibit we had going in. The actual expenses for us to pull Bridge Fest off cost the city twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. So we had a net loss of fourteen thousand twenty-eight dollars on the Bridge Fest event. That took our cash balance of nineteen thousand thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents down to four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six. And you can just see the way that cascaded down throughout the events, except for Rolling on the River. Rolling on the River is the only thing that we generated enough sponsorship, sponsorships for this program. And by program, I mean for the events. The one thing that really hits us, as you can see at the bottom, is the insurance cost that we have to pay for insurance for all of these events. Historically, we've transferred fifteen thousand from General Fund and twenty-six thousand from DDA. We've been doing that since 2018, when we've really gone to overdrive with our events. Every year, I ask the council, whomever it is at that time, do you still want us to continue to do these events? And it's always a resounding yes. I've never gotten direction from council saying, cut the events. Last year, we didn't do that transfer because we had enough funding. We tried to do it again this year. However, we have not generated enough community financial support for the events that we thought we could. To continue the events through the remainder of the year, we are going to have to do this transfer. And then for calendar year 2026, I'm going to ask council to have, to discuss if they want to continue these events and how best to fund them. None of these events include staff time, both prep work, pre-work, or the day of, or the day after, it is all covered, yeah, that's all taken out of just, the overhead is just covered through our general fund budget, or general fund budget. These are actual hard, hard costs to make this, these events operate and happen. Questions?
It's good to see the Griswold was positive.
So that part is just the events that we had.
Yeah, the events, I know.
The overall Griswold is not positive.
And the events that we held were.
Yeah.
Not a net negative.
Correct.
Which is always a plus.
I should know that those concerts that we're talking about at the Griswold for this year in particular, none of the talent was at the cost of the city. It was organized, their Cabin Fever Reliever series was organized by the Alleghen Chapter of the Kalamazoo Folk Life Organization. And they handled the booking for those bands, and then the Wildwoods Concert that took place in May, that band was paid for by the Alleghen Area Arts Council. So that also helps with that positive number there. All, the only expenses that the Positively Alleghen Group had were for the liquor license and then the snacks and beverages to sell at the bar.
Is there any, looking at council? So you said at a later time, we're, you're asking, going to ask council for some direction on this, you're not looking for anything tonight?
No, no, tonight it's the budget transfer.
Oh, yes.
And then after, after New Year's Eve, in January of next year, we're going to sit down and have a conversation about the events for the upcoming year, and what role you think the city needs to play in funding those.
Okay.
I think we probably just ought to look for more sponsorships, using Better Butter as well.
Yep. Yeah, so we got Give Butter up and running right now, and we're starting to slowly roll that out for the, you know, do promote and support our events. Reaching out for more sponsors, I believe we hit every single business that is in the Alleghen area through one of our many, you know, email lists, direct cold calls that I make or Parker might make to an individual business. We had one person last year call and say their business isn't doing too hot, but their family could afford it, and can he just write the check from their personal checking account? And we said, yeah, you can do that. And we'll give you credit to your business, your personal family, or anonymous, however you want to do it. So. Something to keep council, you know, some information for you. Historically, our New Year's Eve and our Bridge Fest had two major five thousand dollar sponsors. We haven't had those sponsors in several years.
Yeah.
And so that's been. And so that's been part of the, you know, slipping, I would say, as we're trying to run up the hill. As you discuss this, or as you prepare to discuss this, if there's more information you would like to know, we can give that information to you. If stuff you'd like to hear from community members, you can have those conversations. I struggle real hard looking at these listed events and saying, if one has to go, which one is it? Because I see hundreds, if not thousands, of people at all the events, not just collectively, but individually. I was gone on Friday, but I got a video of the crowd that was at Rolling on the River Friday dancing at eight-thirty at night. And I was just, just impressed. We have a couple of business owners that are impacted, you know, by the Rolling on the River stuff. Bridge Fest brings out, you know, the all-day-long community, people looking either for community tents or art show, the carnival rides, which I think brings a lot of the people out. New Year's Eve last year, we did the ice skating rink against my recommendation, and I said, we'll give it one year. There wasn't any time where there's less than twenty people on that ice skating rink. And it holds like twenty-five, if that. So it was slam pack, the silent disco that we do there. It brings out so much of good community, you know, people hanging out, doing stuff together, so. It will be a fun discussion. We have a lot of good things going on with our events, but we have to figure out how we wanna fund them. And if we go back to the transfers, then it's going back to the transfers. That's okay, in my opinion. That's a discussion for council to have.
The only other thing I would think of, as you said, like, we're getting sponsorship from people that aren't even in our area because a lot of residents work at employers that are outside the area. Are we reaching out outside of our comfort zone, outside of our area, or reaching out to some of the larger companies in the area like Myers and Target and Walmart that do a lot of community sponsorships?
Yeah.
Kinda, you know, in the future, just to try to get more funding and less transfer is always nice.
Yeah. Yeah, the last two years, we've solicited Meyer for a sponsorship and we've gotten nothing in return. Joel was kinda talking, this slide here shows what we've received so far this year for this events. We, and like Joel mentioned, we got Alleghan Events sponsorship this morning. So we're still getting sponsorships for these upcoming fall and winter events. Our New Year's Eve event last year, we raised ten thousand dollars in sponsorship total. One of those sponsors was Michigan Gas Utilities, and we've gotten them successfully, I think, two to three years in a row now, through their corporate giving. So, yeah, we're, we have certainly looked into those avenues and have had mixed results, so.
But, but, you know, I think a direction you could've gone with that right there, you know, Peter, is reaching out to community members that might work for a larger corporation that we don't have a connection to. You know, maybe there's someone that works at Zoetis in Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo area, and they can go talk to their employer and say, hey, would you guys consider sponsoring, you know, my community's event, kind of a thing? So there's an opportunity for us to educate, you know, community members about asking their employers to help promote and sponsor our events.
Well, I was gonna say Cunningham Dolman. I was excited to see them, just because my family does business with them. So I was like, so they have community members in this community that use their services, so I was excited to see that, so.
And that was one where I think Joel kind of mentioned, but they just picked up the phone and called City Hall and said, hey, how can we be a part of what's going on down there? They weren't on my radar. I didn't send them something asking. They just wanted to be a part of it, so.
Yeah, that was, that was nice. Any other comments of council? All right. Can I get a motion to approve a transfer of forty-one thousand dollars to positively Alleghan?
I make a motion to transfer the funds to positively Alleghan.
I support. All right, so I moved and supported. Any questions, further discussion amongst council? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Down to agenda item number thirteen is the second public comment period for tonight. If you have a public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address. And we like to limit you to three minutes, but I don't think time is a problem tonight.
I'm James Ranny, and.
Oh, sorry, could you, sorry, could you just repeat your last name?
James Ranny.
Okay, thank you.
I was just wondering if anybody here in the council is aware of the county selling the lot across from West Side Auto.
Yes.
Okay. Well, they put it in the hands of a broker, which is someone that would sell something, puts a price on something and sells it. We offered cash Friday at the asking price, and as of today, we have not been informed any reasons why it was turned down. So just wondering, anybody here is aware of that? Because cash offer, asking price, has not been accepted. So just wanted to state that, okay?
All right.
So there's no disclosures, that, what, anything was given to us?
Okay.
Okay. And on some of that downtown stuff, I don't know why nobody asked us the Gun Lake Casino on that.
But our, our city manager will talk about, we've implemented that. If you have any comments to, to that, Joel?
Are you moving down to communications, the city manager?
Sure, I can. That is agenda item number fourteen, communications from the city manager. Do you have any comments to?
Yeah, sure, real quick. Yes, Gun Lake Casino is always on our list of organizations to reach out to. It appears we are just right outside of they consider their service area, even though I think we all know a lot of people that make their ways to one thirty-one in Shelbyville to partake in the events over there. In regards to the county lot, yeah, we're aware it's county-owned. The city, you have no role in that process whatsoever. I was informed it was going out or being listed yesterday is what I was told. I received the link from the county, because we do communicate with the county, to their brochure. And so I could talk to you more afterwards if you'd like, get more information on what your direction was. Wanted to inform council that we have started the texting service. Communication has been a priority of council for the past several years. And if you recall, we were able to get a very, very affordable texting service set up with our current phone provider. And so that is on our website. If you just go to cityofalleghan.org, it's, the first thing pops up, sign up here for texting service. You enter your name and your phone number. Then Parker Ryan will get an email, and then they'll plug you into the system. And just like all other spam texting services, you opt in and you can opt out, you can stop, stuff like that. I probably shouldn't use the word spam, but that's how I feel about it when those things come in. We will be utilizing that to make people aware of events happening, that city events happening in the city, as well as if there's any, you know, urgent information we need to get out there, such as like water main breaks in this neighborhood, and direct people to the appropriate information. This is just another means to educate people. The Fair Parade, which is happening September eighth. Historically, City Council, you've canceled that meeting because you are participants in that parade. We're usually near the front of that parade. So at your next meeting, I'll be bringing a resolution for you to cancel your September eighth meeting. This is something that's been done since as long as anyone at City Hall can remember. I will let you know that last Thursday, Lakeshore Advantage held their developer day. And we went, they brought in a charter bus full of people, so there's probably thirty to forty people in that charter bus. They stopped in downtown Alleghan. They got a fifteen-minute spiel from me on why people should develop in the city of Alleghan, specifically in the downtown. We gave them a tour of the city. And thankfully, the owner above us is, his front door is open, so I took this group in there. When you get a chance, you'll be impressed. The wall is all tin. And it was underneath five layers of wall paneling, so it was completely preserved over time. And it is just remarkable how cool it is on the inside of that building. And then the last thing I need to make you aware of is we are gonna be installing concrete poles around the chiller we just installed. We're gonna estimate from Milbocker to do it as a separate project from, from the Hubbard Street parking lot. We're gonna tie it into the chiller cost. But that was something that we had on the original plan that council saw. And then when I said we want that chiller, you know, screened, so it's not so ugly to look at, I didn't realize that process took the pillars out of the plan. So we're putting them back in after working with Milbocker on the appropriate depth and width and stuff of a concrete pillar to block a vehicle from hitting, you know, from going through it. We also had Doug Codsmann, our DPW, and at that meeting as well. That's what I have to share with you this evening.
All right. Moving down to agenda item number fifteen is roundtable discussion from council and mayor. And councilperson Walker, would you like to start tonight?
Sure, but I do not have any.
All right. Moving down, councilperson Westover.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Zeter?
I'm curious, the basement space that we have for lease, how much of that is filled up and?
Yeah, we currently have just two units occupied. We have plenty of room to grow and to have people sign up for a rentable storage unit in our basement. We're running an advertisement every week in the Alleghan County News. I can't remember how long our initial agreement, yeah, I think it was a six-month agreement that we started at the beginning of summer, so.
And the EV charging station, how often is that being used? I've got no report on that.
Yeah, we can go ahead. We can run a report for you and send it out to council. We have the ability to run a report through their online management system, and so we'll do that.
Okay. And the, the new subdivision, is that exempt from mowing the lawn over there?
So that's a site that's under construction, more than two acres. Actually, I believe it is, but I can look into that further. They're gonna start construction, I got an email from another council member this morning, asking when they're gonna start construction. They're gonna start construction on their homes within the next three to four weeks.
Okay.
So it's all the undergrounds in, the roads in, the utilities are in that subdivision. They're waiting for final inspections before the city signs off on them, saying they're constructed to our standards. So they're going through a little bit of red tape for the city's, you know, benefit. And then once that red tape's all taken care of, we'll go ahead and, you know, they'll start with building the actual structures.
Okay, and that was my next question was, it seems to be sitting for a while. Are they waiting to sell?
Nope, they're waiting for the red tape.
Okay.
So we, we're not just gonna accept the density of the road without doing some tests to make sure they actually poured it the way they're supposed to pour it, because that will become a public road. We need to make sure that the water mains, the sewer mains, the catch basins, the storm, all of that is put together the correct way.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Councilperson Canales?
No comment tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Hooker?
I do not have anything.
All right. Mayor Pro Tom Hance?
The only item I have is, I know the rental inspection ordinance has come up in the past. It didn't get moved at all, or didn't get approved with the changes. And I'm wondering if there's any support on council to either A, do those said changes, so we can actually enforce it, or B, just remove the rental inspection part of our ordinances if we're not going to enforce it. I don't know if anybody else had any.
Yeah, I, I, um, I'm in favor of a committee of sorts to look into, I think look into that a little bit more in-depth and give us recommendations, more recommendations.
So, yeah, that was my only thing is, I know we had gone through and re-codified that and started to work with PCI, but there was issues with the wording in the language in that ordinance. So I'd either A, wanna just update it to correct for that language, or B, just remove it in its entirety, which is what we did when we reviewed all the ordinances before, was we said, if we're not enforcing it, and we're not planning on enforcing it, we got rid of a lot of those type of ordinances, so we didn't have a bunch of junk.
Junk out there, yeah. Are you interested in sitting on a subcommittee?
Sit on a couple meetings on it, we can go over it and come back.
Sounds like you're interested in a subcommittee. Is that something that, just looking at staff, that you would want to help somebody from staff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, you've got.
Not that I don't have faith in councilmembers, they do the work themselves, but yes, council, staff would like to be there in the room with you.
With.
Would you guys want a couple landlords to sit on this committee as well, since they're in the day-to-day business?
I think that's a good idea.
Good idea.
How about a tenant or two?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
I think, Peter.
So I believe.
I think every facet represented would make sense.
And if you're looking for some different landlords, I have had a landlord that I don't know if they have been in contact with City Hall a lot, but they've been asking me what's going on with it. Because. Yeah. And my only comment is that I am not interested in sitting on the subcommittee, is we do have a, you know, a blight ordinance. So what is the, the rental inspection, how is that different from, you know, just enforcing our blight ordinance?
It's enforcing the code. I'm trying to remember which code it's the, it's, it's a code that's developed for rentals. It's an international code.
Yeah, so it's the International Property Maintenance Code is what we have. And all homes have to abide by it, including rentals or not. The difference with the rental ordinance is you have a rental registration aspect and a periodic rental inspection.
Make sure you.
So as a homeowner in the city of Alleghan, I have to abide by this code as well, except the city doesn't make me pay the city an additional fee.
They're not going to come into your home.
They don't come into my home.
And that's where I have a problem with coming into people's homes, whether they rent or own. Now somebody who rents, they have to allow people into their homes.
Mostly to enforce things like fire code, fires, smoke detectors.
But you don't do that with a homeowner.
Holland does it.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but I'm not, we're not Holland, we're city of Alleghan.
I know, but I'm just saying, there is also an issue with some renters.
So when is it going to become this, and this, and this, and, yeah.
There was some issues of, of some properties that have been known not to be the best properties around that really probably don't meet these codes, and we're not enforcing it.
But probably their outside could've been maybe a little bit.
But I'm, I'm okay either way, either removing it or keeping it. I just don't like it just floating out there in the ether where we've approved it in the past, and then it just had the wrong wording for PCI to be able to do it. I'm fine either way, so.
And it becomes junk, like you said.
It's just junk sitting on our books.
I'm glad you brought it back up. Yeah, we should do something about it.
All right, okay. Any, all right, I don't have anything tonight either, so. All right, well, thanks, everybody. And at six forty-four, I will adjourn the meeting.